All right, like I said earlier, I'm gonna go ahead and may I open us with prayer?
That'd be great.
All right, let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, for the privilege of studying your word, we give you thanks for the gift of technology that lets us gather together even when we are physically separated. We give you thanks. Be with us in our time and our conversation. Let us leave changed as a result of our encounter with your word and with one another. Give us what we need during this time to hear what it is that we need to hear. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'm gonna go ahead and mute everyone and Bishop, I'll try to keep an eye on the chat box and interrupt only if if there's something that needs to be brought to your attention.
Right. Jan is asking why there's an echo when everyone talks, but am I echoing to everybody or just to Jan? This, yeah. Uh, yeah, sometimes sometimes you have to sign out and sign in. I've had to do that before if it's if the sound is doing something wonky. But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and jump in and say that we are looking at chapters thirteen and fourteen in Mark and I'm going to share my screen. So let's see, there we go. That's today, if you didn't know. So, uh, yeah. This is, this is actually what we call, um, chapter thirteen is Mark's little apocalypse. You're gonna see this really if you're following along in church in the lectionary year. We will start to get this really in in December with with Advent because we start having Advent is about waiting and watching for the coming one. It's not just about the coming at the of the second coming of Jesus. It's also about the baby in the manger who's coming, but it's about the one who comes at the end of time. And apocalypse is a strange word. What's that?
Catherine, you unmuted yourself somehow.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to do that.
All right. But if she laughs, she's okay to be unmuted because she's a good sort of laugh track person. Apocalypse of Jewish and Christian writing somewhere between, I'd say, three hundred B.C. to A.D. One fifty marked by pseudonymity. What does that mean? It's usually attributed to somebody who's not actually writing.
Oh, no.
Now, now I'm unmuted, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So usually a pseudonymity, symbolic imagery, the expectation of imminent cosmic cataclysm. Remember the movie about the Vietnam War that was called Apocalypse Now? And there's another movie just called Apocalypse and it has to do with the end of time. Apocalypse literally and simply just means manifest or revealed. One of the books of scripture, the one that we call Revelation certainly is an apocalyptic piece of writing because it's about the end of time, lots of symbolism. The ruling powers of evil raises up this new life and this new ushering in of a messianic reign of God. A whole new era and reality that is ushered in. But Revelation, the technical name of this of it is the Apocalypse of John. And it's probably not, it's John of Patmos, you know, the one who's exiled to the island of Patmos. And this apocalypse, let me tell you what it's not because almost everywhere I've ever been and we say, let's have a Bible study. And people say, yeah, let's do Revelations. First of all, it doesn't have an S on the end. But and and everybody wants to read into it that what's happening now is this fulfillment of this apocalyptic vision. And so we're living in the end times and Messiah is coming soon. And well, eventually somebody will be right about that, but there's never been a generation when all kinds of people weren't saying Messiah is coming soon. The point of apocalypse is really to be writing to people who are going through great persecution or travail. And the essential message of apocalyptic writing is hang in there. All will be well in the end. And if all is not well, this is not the end, that God has yet to do a new thing. Acknowledging fully that it's that it's, it really stinks the way that it is right now, but it's not always going to be that way. Also, again, very symbolic. So for instance, you know, most people in Revelation, most intellectual biblical scholars, in my opinion, would call Revelation something that's really about what's happening to the persecuted Christians in in the late first century where all of these terrible things are happening. And really, it's the Roman rule that is doing that. And so like, for instance, the sign of the beast, the six, six, six. And you know, everybody wants to make movies about that and nobody wants to be behind the license plate that has a six, six, six in it or a phone number or any of those sort of superstitious things. But what that really is, is simply the numerical value because in ancient Palestine, letters had numerical value. And if you add up all of the all of the letters of Emperor Nero's name, it adds up to six hundred and sixty-six. So really, they were just smashing the emperor without saying the emperor. They were speaking cryptically in apocalyptic literature. So, so the thirteenth chapter of Mark is an apocalypse. It's this talk about the end time. The second half of the book of Daniel is an apocalypse. And in fact, Mark quotes Daniel a few times. A part of Ezekiel is an apocalypse. Again, Revelation is apocalypse. So I don't want to dwell too terribly much on that, but I do want you to get a sense. Just usually there's somebody like Enoch or Abraham. It's attributed to their having written it or seen it as a vision. Resistance literature, as I was describing with the Roman emperor. Usually there's a heavenly intermediary. There's a lot of dualism, the present age, the that is evil, the coming age, which is messianic. Also, the pessimism about the possibility for change in the present age. We need divine intervention to overthrow all of these things. So that's what apocalypse is, and I don't want to dwell on it anymore. But but people are fascinated and very, very confused by apocalypse. Like for, again, one of the things that that lots and lots and lots of Christians like to talk about is the rapture. And essentially, I'm just gonna tell you what I think, but imagine that. But rapture really is not a biblical concept. Yeah, Jesus talks about two women grinding in the field. One is taken, one is left, but there's never any real developed theology of a rapture. That's that's sort of a misreading of Revelation and of all sorts of things. It's, it's really a message given to tell persecuted people to hang in there. But I do love the bumper sticker I saw in Boone years ago when everybody was first of all, for several years, people were riding around all over Boone with bumper stickers that said, "In case of rapture, this vehicle will be unmanned." And and two or three years after that, several people were getting bumper stickers that said, "In case of rapture, may I have your vehicle?" That was always one of my favorite.
Or the women will still be driving.
Oh, that's right. Well, so now let me just, let me just jump in. It starts with Jesus foretelling the destruction of the temple. And this is quite fascinating in Mark's Gospel. Mark might have been written right about the time of the destruction of the temple or when it was just imminently coming. Most scholars try to say more like sixty-four. The temple was actually destroyed in seventy. Now Herod was, uh, Herod the Great, the one who was around who killed all the little boy babies when Jesus was born. And you know, the Magi came and Herod the Great tried to trick them and they tricked him. He started the building of this around seventeen B.C. or BCE. And it was not finished in seventy. You know, eighty-seven years later, it was not finished. But Jesus is, it was, he foretells that it's destruction, which is a huge deal because the temple is like the holiest place. And remember, Jesus has not been to Jerusalem before, just like the previous day. Look, teacher, what large stones, large buildings, remember sixty tons, some of these stones? Some of the walls sixteen feet thick. Yes, it was big stones, big buildings. I mean, let me just give you a sense of this. This is Herod's temple. And again, it wasn't finished in the lifetime of Jesus. It wasn't even finished in seventy. But if you see the the one side that's closest to the foreground here, that was nine hundred feet long, which is three hundred yards, three football fields across. So, you know, I'm sorry, that was six hundred feet, then nine hundred feet in the in the longest direction. So it was huge. And gonna jump back up to the scripture piece. You see these great buildings? Not one stone will be left upon another. Like even how do you do that? How do you knock a sixty-ton stone off of another sixty-ton stone? And then he was sitting on the Mount of Olives opposite the temple. Remember the Kidron Valley to the east of Jerusalem and then a big mountain called the Mount of Olives, which is covered with, guess what? Olive trees, even today. Some of them that would have been there in the time of Jesus, some of them are, we can prove them to be twenty-four hundred years old. So some of those olive trees were there. And of course, the James and John and Andrew, Peter, James and John, they're the inner circle. But on this one, Andrew gets invited into the inner circle or he wandered in. But they ask him privately, when will this be? What will be the sign that we're about to accomplish this? And then Jesus said, beware that no one leads you astray. Many will come in my name and say, I am he, and they will lead many astray. False messias, hmm. And when you hear of wars and rumors of wars, do not be alarmed. This must take place, but the end is still to come. For nation will rise against nation, kingdom against kingdom. There will be earthquakes, various places, there will be famines. This is but the beginning of the birth pangs. So likening it to a woman in labor, the birth pangs and all of these signs about the destruction of the world as we know it, the present age. And as for yourselves, beware, because they will hand you over to councils. It says literally in the scripture, Sanhedrin's, which means councils. And you'll be beaten and synagogue, stand before governors and kings because of me, a testimony to them. How many of you have this kind of literature in your evangelism brochure for your congregation? Come join us at St. Luke's. You will be beaten, you will stand before governors and kings, you will be thrown out and flailed and, you know. No, this is not real fun stuff. Verse ten, "The good news must first be proclaimed to all nations." Now that goes way back to a Jewish and we, we simply must not as Christians and Jews forget that in the clearest prophecies of Isaiah, and you know, some of this just from the plain old popularity of Handel's Messiah, which is just exquisite, in my opinion, in many of those pieces. "And the glory of the Lord shall be revealed," says Isaiah. "And who will see it? All flesh will see it together." You know, all nations will stream into God's holy city. So this good news, even like the covenant to Abraham originally, which is to say that you are blessed and I will make of you a great nation. But why will I make you a great nation? So that you will be a blessing to all nations. So this, this universality really thread that runs through all of scripture that I I fear that we often forget that this is for this is for everybody. So if you're the chosen people, you're only the chosen people insofar as you're chosen to bless others. That's why we're chosen. When they bring you to trial and hand you, don't worry before about what you're to say, but whatever's given to you at that time is not you who speak, but the Holy Spirit. Now I have heard many a preacher quote this verse as an excuse for not preparing sermons. And it shows, but you know, maybe it's in our failure to proclaim that maybe the gospel gets proclaimed, but we need to really, really struggle with it and put it there. But this is also in the context of persecution, not showing up in the pulpit that'll block on Sunday morning. The Holy Spirit will tell you what to say. And this awful prediction that brother will betray brother, father his child, children rise against parents, have them put to death. All of this very, very common in ancient, more apocalyptic type of literature. You will be hated by all, this upheaval, this tumult because of my name, but the one who endures to the end will be saved. So again, where is the key message of apocalyptic endure? That's not a horrible message for me right now in twenty twenty and in an election year and pandemic and just all of the justice challenge that is necessary and yet you know, frustrating. So endure, the one who endures to the end. So the word of apocalyptic is hang there. God has got this, God has got you, and God's about to do a new thing. Then we get to the desolating sacrilege. Isn't this fun? That always sounds.
Before you get to the desolating sacrilege, but you, a comment you just made, John Connolly made a comment in the in the chat bar that was really, really good that the the birth pangs are not the right, that's not the goal. The goal is the birth.
That's right, but but there has to be birth pangs to get there, yeah.
The goal is the, is the new thing.
Yeah. Yep, yep, there you go. I love that, yeah. When you see the desolating sacrilege set up where it ought not to be, let the reader understand. Okay, reader, do you understand? Probably not, right? So let me just read briefly to you about the desolating sacrilege that is mentioned twice in the book of Daniel, including Daniel eight, eleven through twelve, Antiochus Epiphanes, who carted the cream of the crop Jerusalem crowd to Babylon and so on. And or and actually, this is, he profaned the temple by setting up an altar to a foreign god in the original Solomon Temple. I'm sorry, this was, this was actually an Assyrian guy, wasn't it? Not the Babylonian guy who came through first. And then this desolating sacrilege is worshiping other gods in the temple. And what's the worst thing you can do if you're a Jewish person? Because your whole identity is the Lord, our God is one. So that's the desolating sacrilege that that the, and remember, he's already talked about the temple falling down. You know, and here you go, you know, the one on the housetop, don't go back to house to get anything. The one in the field, don't turn back to get a coat. Woe to those who are pregnant, nursing infants, pray that it may not be in winter. What in the world does that mean? Well, in Jerusalem and in Palestine, southern Judea, in the winter, there's mostly a lot of rain. But does it snow in Jerusalem? Yes, it does. About six years ago, when Beth Kearney and the gang, Bishop Leonard and the gang, Fred, were you on that trip, Fred, to Jerusalem? And you guys got snowed in in Bethlehem or Jerusalem, didn't you? Snowed about seven inches or something like that. So anyway, it does snow in Jerusalem, but not often. In those days, there'll be suffering. So again, all of this, and if anyone says verse twenty-one, hey, look, here's the Messiah, look, there he is. Don't believe it. False messias and false prophets will appear and produce signs and omens and lead astray, if possible, the elect. But be alert. I mean, why not? The world needs more alerts, right? Okay, I just was seeing if you were paying attention. Be alert, I've already told you everything. So there is there's this watchfulness now that is evolving. That's why we get it in this season of Advent when we're looking forward. In those days, after that suffering, the sun darkened, the moon will not give its light. The stars will be falling from heaven, the powers of heaven will be shaken. Then they will see the Son of Man coming in the clouds with great power and glory. And he will send out the angels and gather his elect from the four winds. Do you see why the Calvinists and the Presbyterians were not completely off base and not just making all that stuff up? The elect, those whose or as Revelation in another apocalyptic place says, those whose names are written from the ends of earth to the end of heaven. Remember our fig tree when Jesus was walking from Bethany to Jerusalem? And it wasn't the season for figs and Jesus cursed it. Now he comes back to the fig tree. From the fig tree learned its lesson as soon as its branch becomes tender, puts forth its leaves, you know that summer is near. So also, when you see these things taking place, you know that he is near at the very gates. There's a lot of scholarly debate about who that he is. Yahia, God, the Savior, which may or may not be a divine being. Because if you'll recall, in the book of Isaiah and other prophets, they call Cyrus of Persia, the Messiah regularly because he set them free from Babylon and took them back to Jerusalem. He certainly was not divine, but they thought he was the anointed one doing God's will. This generation will not pass away until all of these things have taken place. And again, that's a very formulaic, apocalyptic language. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away. Again, back to Isaiah, the prophet. You know, a voice says, cry, and I cry, you know, all flesh is grass, the grass withers, the flower fades. But the word of our God will stand forever. So the sense that the word is eternal. And then, of course, the later Christian theologizing of that by John and others is that the word really is not ink on a page like a Torah. The word is actually Jesus, remember? So again, very, very Adventy. About that day or hour, no one knows, neither the angels nor the son, but only the father. So don't ask me when it's gonna be, I don't even know. But beware and keep alert. For you do not know when the time will come. It's like a man going on a journey, he leaves his home and puts slaves in charge and commands the doorkeeper to be on watch. And keep awake, for you do not know when the master of the house will come. Always read, I love reading this particular gospel passage on a Sunday morning right before the sermon. And I usually pause and read it again and say, did you hear me? Therefore, keep awake. Some of the rest of your preachers don't have that challenge. But it can be challenging. In the evening, midnight, cock crow, or at dawn. These are the four measures of the night watches. People in villages kept watch and that's how you, I mean, it's evening, midnight, cock crow and dawn. Those are the four night watches. Or else may find you asleep when he comes suddenly. And what I say to you, I say to all, keep awake. I've said, I've said to you, I think during this study at least once, that my very simplistic, but to me at least helpful to grasp simple way of talking about spirituality is to pay attention, but part of that is to keep awake. Just, just be paying attention because it's so easy to be distracted or for people to deflect and put our focus and energy and even conflict on maybe important things, but not essential things. So a lot of it has to do with focus. I mean, we talk about in very real ways that I think all of us have to some degree and, you know, attention deficit disorder. But I think, I think of spiritual deficit disorder as really a great malaise of the church, or at least of me, that a lot of times I'm just focused in the wrong place. I've got to train myself and and discipline myself to focus in in helpful and hopeful ways. So let me, let me just pause there for a minute because now we're gonna get into the passion narrative in depth. And let me just ask thoughts or questions or things in the chat bar about apocalypse, because that's a lot to throw at you. And it's really weird. We need a whole semester of a three-hour a week class to begin to get a sense of really what apocalyptic is. So, yeah. So Joan was also there in Bethlehem and John, and yeah, it snowed in Bethlehem. So several of you were there. So yeah, it does. But the main part that's really, really difficult in Jerusalem and in Judea in the winter is just unusually heavy rains and then lots of flooding because there's all this, it's very hilly. And all these little areas that are normally dry become call them a wadi, you know, they really become a rushing torrent when there's normally nothing there. And if you have to flee the city in the wintertime in the midst of those rushing torrents, it's gonna be hard to get away. So that's what that was kind of about. But yeah, there's a good scripture reference about God's elect. Those whom God has called, God has also chosen, and those whom he's chosen, he's also appointed, and those whom he's appointed, you know, and so on. You know, that's what Paul says in Romans. What was the point of Jesus speaking of apocalyptic times? I believe that it has to do with what is about to happen to him in Jerusalem and what is about to happen to his followers in the wake of his crucifixion. When he's foretelling the destruction of the temple, he's foretelling the great conflict that, and they're already under that within the Romans. So, so I believe that Jesus is telling his own followers, and remember the followers of John the Baptist, who were really, really quite important and foundational for who the first Christians were, that that God is going to do a new thing, but it's gonna get a lot worse before it gets better for him and for those who choose to follow. And this is not a surprise, by the way, because how many times did Jesus tell them? And how many times did they not get it? That he was about to suffer and die? And if they wanted to follow him, they needed to suffer and die and save, to save their life, they must lose it and take up their cross and follow and so on. Yeah, good, Gerald Ashby, we must remain awake through a great revolution. Yeah, because I mean, wouldn't that, I mean, I really worry about that. You know, that one of my greatest fears is I might fall asleep or daydream and miss my life. I mean, you know, my, one of my biggest fears is not that God is not speaking or acting or being revealed, but but that God is. And that, and that's scary on two levels. One, what if I just miss it just because I, I'm so freaked out about something penultimate, something not fine, not really essential? Or what if God is speaking and I do pay attention and it's not what I wanted to hear? Like what if it's, go to Nineveh? Thank you very much for sharing your opinion. You know. So, okay, so Bonnie's asking, could please connect the Mark thirteen, fourteen to the Daniel? Yeah, what is the desolating sacrilege that, well, remember, Jesus has just said right before Mark thirteen, fourteen, that the temple is going to be destroyed. And before it's destroyed, of course, it will be by invaders and it'll be by by foreigners who not only, remember, want to win, but they want to humiliate and and make an example of. And so what you do as a conqueror is you put your gods in their temple. And it's a way to say that like the Babylonians did, you know, they worshiped the god Marduk. Remember the cartoon about the Great Dane named Marduk? Marduk's name was from the Babylonian god. And other Roman emperors put their, you know, image and statue in the temple, which was just sacrilege. So, so Jesus is saying, just like in Daniel, where Antiochus, the invading emperor, desecrated the altar by making it an altar to foreign gods and would not allow us to make our sacrifices there. desecrated the altar by making it an altar to foreign gods and would not allow us to make our sacrifices there to God. In the near future, which in fact came to pass. That the temple was destroyed and completely, um, well, I desecrated is the best word I know how to use. Yeah, and, and, and so certainly Jesus must have seen that coming. I hope that helps a little bit, uh, Bonnie. Uh, this, this next section is gonna be very, very familiar, just because we read it every year as, as a, as a key part of um, our liturgical procession, and it's part of Holy Week and Sunday of the Passion and Good Friday and, um, and, and so on. But remember, all of the Gospels, but Mark in particular, are passion narratives. What does passion mean? Suffer, suffering. Uh, so, uh, you know, to, to say you are passionate about something, even in the English language, literally means that you feel so strongly about this that it hurts, or you're willing to suffer for this. People say you can't marry, can't marry, uh, you can't measure uh, love. But I think scripturally you really can, uh, because you measure it by what is the lover willing to sacrifice and suffer for the sake of the beloved? Um, I think that's a pretty good biblical definition of measure of, of love. And so the passion is the suffering. To say in English, we have compassion, doesn't mean we have, we feel for them. To have compassion means we jump down and suffer with the people. Um, so when you say, gosh, I just have compassion for what she's going through. Well, that means that you're gonna do something about it. And maybe you can't even get her out of it, but you're gonna jump down in there with her and at least not let her be by herself in whatever it is she's going through. So passion, important word. So now, uh, point of reference, two days before the Passover, so that would be a Wednesday, cause the Passover is always a Friday. And it would be the month Nissan, N-I-S-A-N, in Hebrew, it would be the thirteenth day of Nissan, in fact. Uh, and the festival of the unleavened bread. Now, the festival of the unleavened bread is actually the fourteenth Nissan, so so, so this is a little bit confusing, uh, in these points of reference. The chief priests and the scribes. Now, remember in the other uh, Gospels, the big foil for Jesus are the Pharisees, but not in Mark. Who are they? The scribes, remember? The ones who can draw up legal documents and divorces and um, wills and, you know, all of that kind of thing. They're sort of semi-religious, semi-legal people. But it's now the chief priests and the scribes, cause you didn't have the chief priest till you got to Jerusalem. Cause they sent out their spies, but you don't have chief priests outside of Jerusalem. And the scribes are looking for a way to arrest Jesus. This is like the fifth time we've been told that in Mark's Gospel. It's not like it's a secret. It's a secret to the disciples, really, like a lot of things, but um, but they're trying, they're, they're trying to arrest Jesus. Why? I mean, why are they doing this? You know, kind of like Pilate is gonna say later, why, what evil has he done? You start threatening power structures. You start drawing a huge crowd and a lot of attention, and you start being perceived to undermining for lack of a better word, and one that comes to the top of my mind in today's world, uh, you start undermining the privilege that has a stronghold, whether it be religious or racial or economic or educational or gender, or whatever it is you wanna fill in the blanks with. That is not going to be welcome. And in fact, the institutional powers that be really only have two choices, especially if the crowds are beginning to follow the one doing the perceived undermining. They can even get with the program and follow that person too and say, well, uh, I'm sorry, we were wrong. Or, or you can kill them. I mean, you really don't, there's not much in between. And uh, that's not so far fetched for us to kind of apply, I think, to a lot of things in our world even today. So, uh, they said, not during the festival, or there may be a riot among the people. That's a little bit ironic, because when do they actually arrest him? On actual Passover day, you know, on the Mount of Olives, so, uh, but at least in that moment, you know, you get this little uh, indication that something's about to happen. This becomes very symbolic. Now, Jesus has already been to Bethany twice, so this makes the third time. And he hangs out in the house of Simon the leper. Remember one of the big problems? Being unclean, where Jesus touches sick people and everything? You can't go in a leper's house. He does. And as he sat at the table, a woman came with an alabaster jar of uh, pure nard, uh, ointment of pure nard, and she broke open the jar and poured the ointment on his head. Now, if, if she would pour it on his feet, you know, like we get Mary doing in, you know, some of the other Gospels and so on, that might be one thing. You know, and wiping it with her hair and all this, but she pours it in Mark's Gospel on his head, which is extremely obvious to the reader that this is an anointing as a king or a great prophet. This is an anointing of Jesus. This is a coronation of, of, of a new kind of king, whose kingdom and whose way is a way of sacrifice and of suffering and not power lorded over. This, this is really clear, I think, to Mark's readers. But some were there who said to one another in anger, why was this ointment wasted in this way? Nobody in your congregation ever has uh, arguments or conversations about uh, wasting money and doing elaborate things. Uh, but sometimes there are religious people who do that. This leper could have been sold for more than three hundred denarii, remember? That's a day's wage to feed a family of probably six, feed cloth and everything, a family. So this is a year's worth of wages, if you take out the Sabbaths. For, for a family. This is a lot of money, and the money could have been given to the poor. That's always a debate, isn't it? Uh, I've always debated that with endowments. Endowments are so cool when you have them, because they spin off this stuff. But I'm like, yeah, but we got all these people right now, why don't we just give the endowment to these people? And of course, usually the answer is because it was not the intent of the original donors. Yeah, I mean, you know, I get all that, but um, but, but these people are having a similar discussion. Um, so the ones who are uh, complaining about this, it says, and they scolded her. Uh, the, the word in Greek is, is a beautiful, beautiful word, because it actually sort of is, um, uh, what do you call that? Onomatopoeia, where the word actually sounds like what it is. You know, kind of like phlegm, um, you know, uh, you can't say phlegm without having said phlegm. Thank you, yes, right? What a, what a wonderful, but, and they scolded her. What it says literally is, and they snorted at her, which is normally only used as a sound that a horse makes. So they snorted at her. Uh, which is very um, demeaning. It's very patriarchal and sexist. It's very um, it's, it's basically saying you're not a human being. And Jesus said, let her alone. Why do you trouble her? Why do you trouble the woman? Uh, best sermon ever by Tiffany Chaney. At Church White, a couple of years ago.
I'm sure you can find it on the website.
Why do you trouble the woman? Why do you trouble the woman? Leave her alone, she has performed a good service for me. You know, Tiffany, of course, was making it about the fiftieth anniversary of the ordination of women and about uh, you know, just the oppressive structures in that uh, that uh, reality. And, and, and uh, she did a marvelous job with that, if you can find it online. She's performed a good service, mate, you always will have the poor with you, and that's a troublesome kind of a thought. And you can show kindness to them whenever you wish, but you will not always have me, at least not in the flesh, right? She has done what she could. Um, I'll tell you who else has preached a phenomenal sermon on this that some of you know. Uh, Pastor Sarah, you know Tom Ridenhour. He preached a sermon on this after his mother died, when I was in seminary. Um, and talked about how he grew up with a real fancy priestly type of a pastor who wore fancy vestments. And he called him a chancel prancer and never really cared much for him and didn't really care about all that litter and formality and all these other things. He was a homiletics guy, a preacher guy, and, and he really poo-pooed all of that and really pretty openly criticized a lot of the liturgical and opulence and lavishness and wastefulness of resources in the church until his mama died. And at her service, there was all of this sort of lavish music and decoration and vestments and all of these things. And he felt, he was like, I get it, you know? Um, that, in, in other words, you know, sort of in a, sort of like in Ecclesiastes, sort of a way, a time, a season for everything. But there is also a time to be lavish. There's time to uh, almost be wasteful or reckless. We can't be that way all the time, but there's a there, there are rituals that need to be marked in a very special way. There's something to be said about one's Sunday best. That uh, that says, how, how do we celebrate and give God our best? And, and then Jesus tells us, this is a foreshadowing in verse eight, she's done what she could. She has anointed my body beforehand for its burial, because you remember what happens? He's put in the tomb on the Sabbath and they don't get to anoint his body, so it happens beforehand. Truly, I tell you, wherever the good news is proclaimed in the whole world, what she has done will be told in remembrance of her. I think what Jesus is really busting here is false religiosity that says, oh, we want to take care of the poor, we want to do this, and we want to do this. And the folks who have been challenging Jesus all along, and we've already been told that they have a not-so-hidden agenda, they're trying to catch him um, and blame him and, and discredit him. So he's having none of it. I mean, he already knows the score. He's gonna die, he's been telling him. Then you get this kind of little meanwhile, you know? To the side, Judas Iscariot, who's one of the twelve, went to the chief priests in order to betray him to them. And when they heard it, they were greatly pleased. They promised to give him money, so he began to look for an opportunity to betray him. And then now we get on the first day of unleavened bread. His disciples said to him, where do you want us to go make preparations to eat the Passover? And he sent them in, and remember, they found the upper room furnished and ready. I'm not gonna read every word of this. I think most of you know this, almost you could tell it, maybe not word for word, but you could tell pretty well the whole thing. And he goes and he has the Passover meal, uh, which all Jews would do. And then when it was evening, he came with the twelve, and when they had taken their places, were eating it, he says, truly, I tell you, one of you will betray me, one who is eating with me. But see, this in itself is fascinating in Gospel Good News, because he knows that the betrayer is there and the betrayer gets to eat with everybody. Do you know how earth-shattering that is? Rather than, hey, I know what you're fixing to do, Judas, just get out of here. No, they, they all, and then they began to be distressed and say, no, surely not I. And he says, it's one of the twelve, one dipping the bread into the bowl, for the son of man goes as it's written, but woe to the one by whom the son of man is betrayed. Been born. Yeah, uh, yeah, strong words for Judas. And then while they were eating, now remember the feeding of five thousand, the feeding of the four thousand, and the real formulaic Jewish meal, not just Passover, four verbs. Broke, uh, 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 he took, blessed, broke, gave. And that's what he does. He gave it to them and said, take, this is my body. Then he took a cup and after giving thanks, he gave it to them and all of them drank from it. Now, remember the second week, I believe it was, when we talked a lot about bread and the yeast of the Pharisees and the leaven of the Pharisees and everything? We've been talking a lot about bread. Um, we don't have this narrative in um, in, in uh, Mark, uh, but we uh, know from Luke that Jesus is born in Bethlehem and that, that means the house of bread. Beth means house, B-E-T-H. Uh, and lecham is bread, so Belecham is uh, the house of bread. So, so, so Jesus, from the beginning, becomes our bread, becomes our sustenance, becomes our nurture and nourishment. And then this, it comes to a culmination here, all of them then drank from the cup. And he said, this is my blood of the covenant. So, so now, that's not part of the Passover, in case you didn't know. To say, this is my body, this is my blood, um, and, and that is, is, he's taking it and he's adapting it and he's adding to it. Uh, and I won't drink of, until I drink it new in the kingdom of God. So they sung a hymn, which was normal at a Passover, and then they went out to the Mount of Olives. And Jesus said, you will all become uh, deserters. It's written, I will strike the shepherd and the sheep will be scattered. After I'm raised up, I'll go before you to Galilee. So again, he's still predicting his resurrection. And Jesus says, I mean, Peter says, even though all become deserters, um, literally, it says, fall awayers. Even though all become fall awayers, I will not. And Jesus said, truly, I tell you this day, this very night, before the cock crows twice, you will deny me three times. But he said vehemently, even though I must die with you, I will not deny you. And all of them said the same. Oh, bless him, bless his heart. Because I think he intends that, I mean, I fully believe he intends that, and he believes that. Getsemane, uh, part of, it's on the Mount of Olives, uh, Getsemane, literally in Hebrew, means um, oil press. And of course, um, more than for eating, olives were valued for their fuel value, because that's what you used for lamps, was olive oil. And you used olive oil for cooking and you used olive oil for all kinds of anointing and bathing and medicine, and I mean, olive oil was like Jesus said to his disciples, sit here while I pray. And he took Peter and James and John, hey, same inside group, remember? And he began to be distressed and agitated, and he said to them, I'm deeply grieved. You see the humanity of Jesus here, right? Son of man, son of man, son of man, yes, but the deep humanity. Even to death, remain here, and he just told them in this apocalyptic thing, and keep awake, right? This is literal, this is not figurative, keep awake. And he threw himself on the ground, prayed that if it were possible, this hour might pass from him, Abba. Which is not the way you pray to God. Um, it's a Hebrew word, it's an endearment for a father. Some people say daddy in English is close to that. You, all things are possible, remove this cup from me, yet not what I want, but what you want. Remember when James and John were arguing about who is gonna be the greatest? And he said, can you drink the cup that I'm gonna drink from? And uh, are you able to be baptized with the baptism? Yep, we can drink from that cup, yep, we're able, well, here it is. Um, and he came and found them sleeping, he said to Peter, what? Can't you stay awake? Pray that you won't come into the hour of trial. The spirit is indeed willing, but the flesh is weak. Again, he went away and we, there, there's a, there's a quote that we use a lot of times, even in more secular culture. Again, he went away and prayed, saying the same word, came back, they were asleep. He came a third time and said, are you still sleeping? So essentially, you could say that Peter has already denied him three times right here, but there's gonna be a worse one. Come on, let's go, my betrayer is at hand. So Jesus is trying to like, say, is there a way out of this? Cause if there is, uh, I choose that door. But then it becomes apparent that no, that there's, there's not a way. Immediately, remember that word in Mark? Immediately, while he was still speaking, Judas, one of the twelve arrived, and with him, a crowd with swords and clubs, from the chief priests, scribes, elders. Now, the betrayer had given them a sign, saying, the one I kiss is the man, arrest him. I mean, how how sleazy is that, you know? Kisses the man, arrest him and lead him away under guard. To kiss a rabbi was a, was a very appropriate greeting and show of respect, usually on the forehead. So when he came up, uh, once he said Rabbi and kissed him, and they laid hands on him and arrested him. But one of those who stood near, some other Gospels named Peter, drew his sword and struck the slave of the high priest, whom whom some sources name as Malkus, cutting off his ear. And Jesus said, have you come out with swords and clubs to arrest me as though I were a bandit? Now, remember, when he came into Jerusalem, what's the first thing he did? He called the religious leaders bandits. You're going to arrest me like I'm a bandit? Too late, I already called you a bandit for all your money changing in the temple. Day after day, I was with you, teaching, you didn't arrest me there. But let the scriptures be fulfilled, you know, you do your thing. And all of them deserted him and fled. Yep, there they went. There I would have gone. Certain young man was following. This is so weird, by the way. Certain people have made PhD dissertations over these two verses. Was following him. A number of people say it was Mark, the mark who's writing the Gospel, wearing nothing but a linen cloth. They called hold of him, but he left the linen cloth and cloth and ran off naked. You know, which is really, nobody quite knows what to make of it, except that it's sort of symbolic that this bystander, you know, runs away and Jesus, who is the one who's being arrested, you know, essentially surrenders. Part of the reason, though, that we, you know, we try to lift up the disciple Thomas, who always gets called doubting Thomas. And you wonder why, well, you never call Peter, you know, three time denier Peter as his name. And you don't call Mark ran away naked Mark. But in any case, this is kind of obscure. I'm interested in what you all think about the ran away naked guy. So they put Jesus to the high priests and all the Caiphas, presumably all the chief priests, elders, scribes were assembled. And Peter had followed at distance and sitting with the guards, warming at the fire. And the chief priests and whole council were looking for testimony against Jesus to put him to death, but they couldn't find any. Many gave false testimony against him and their testimony didn't agree. That's problematic in a trial. Some stood up and said, we heard him say, I'll destroy this temple that is made with hands. And in three days, I will build another not made with hands. But even on this, they didn't agree. And the high priest stood before them and asked Jesus, have you no answer? What, what is this? They testify against you, but he was silent and didn't answer. And then he said, are you the Messiah? And Jesus said, I am. Just like Moses said, or God said to Moses, hey, would the people say, or Pharaoh says, who am I going to say sent me? Tell them I am sent me. Jesus is I am. You will see the son of man seated at the right hand of power. The power is just a, it means God. It's a way of not saying Yahweh because a Jewish person was not supposed to speak or write the name. And coming in the clouds of heaven. And then the high priest tore his clothes, which was a symbol of great distress. Do we still need witnesses? You've heard his blasphemy. What is your decision? And all of them condemned him as deserving death and they spit on him, blindfolded him, hit him, say prophesy, prophesy. Just as a matter, just because I've heard enough lay readers missed this one. With a C Y on the end, it's prophecy, which is the content of what it is, it's prophecy. With an S Y, it's prophesy, which is the act of telling prophecy. You prophesy a prophecy. The guards also took him over and beat him. And while Peter was below in the courtyard, the servant girl came and said, ooh, I know, he was with him. And Peter said, I don't, I don't even know what you're talking about. And the cock crowed and then the servant girl said it again, and then the cock crowed again. And he's cursed and swore an oath. I don't even know this man or what you're talking about. And Peter remembered that Jesus had said to him, before the cock crows twice, you will deny me three times. And he broke down and wept. To realize what was happening and what he has done and how he is abandoned, the one he gave up everything for, including his daddy. Left his daddy sitting in the boat. Just, you know, just to read the passion narrative, to read it out loud, it's really hard without your voice cracking. Maybe just a little terribly inappropriate. You know? So as a basketball player or an imagined basketball player, once upon a time, I love this interpretation of Peter denying Jesus three times. So I don't bring that in here. So our, our time is getting close at hand, but let's see what we have in the, in the chat bar here. Did you refer to God as Father? Generally, that was not the way that it was referred to. With Tammy Jones West reading the Gospel. Okay, I'll
The link, Sandra found the link to the, why do you bother the woman?
Oh, right, right, right. And Tammy did read the Gospel, yes. Hagia Sophia, Christian church for hundreds of years. Saint Sophia, Hagia is a, is a saint. Church, and now it's a mosque, or the Alhambra, that was a mosque, is now a Christian church, desolating sacrilege for both. Yeah, and the Temple Mount is now the Dome of the Rock mosque. Compassion equals to suffer with, exactly. Why in Luke does the wine come first and not the bread? If you ask me, does it? I would have to tell you, gosh, I don't know. I'll have to go read that. So I don't know the answer to that, Fred. Except for the possibility, because it's pretty clear, and I always find it amazing when people in our congregations complain about intingement, because it's probably the clearest, most biblical supper way that people did things, because it was probably a bowl, more of a bowl than a cup. And people dipped, they sobbed, you know? And that's the way that they would have done it. And but I don't know why the wine would come first in Luke. I'll, I'll look into that, Fred. I know where you and I find it interesting, Judas still betrayed Jesus even after Jesus said he knew what would happen. Yeah, you know, getting caught doesn't mean that you don't do it. I mean, you know, people have psychologized Judas. And we really don't know his motivation or his inner heart. But a lot of folks have speculated, well, he knew that Jesus, one way or another, was going to die. Some people even say he was trying to hasten it so that Jesus' resurrection could happen. Or he was testing it to say, well, if what this has been telling us, then it won't matter if he dies. I, I don't know. I don't know that there's a definitive reason why Judas went ahead and did it. Yeah, the first streaker, there you go. The, the, the ran away naked guy. A young man, this one has a white robe in Mark 16, could be a connection, you're right. Jesus is forsaken and abandoned and then reconciled. You know what? That actually has been connected by a number of people. That the one in chapter 16 is the same guy that ran away. And it could very well be a reconciliation piece that ran away and then came back. All I, this is a lot. These, these chapters are very long and chock full of stuff. And next week is our last time together. And this is, this has been such a blessing for me. So I thank you for, for being here. Not just to be in the scriptures, but I know Zoom is not the same, but dang, it's way better than not having a community. And, and just to have people from so many different congregations and even people, well, tonight in different countries and, you know, and in different states and things like that is, it's been a, a real blessing to be able to, to share together what binds us together in the first place. Our faith in God through Christ and, and the word that nurtures and transforms us. So of course, next week, we're going to get this really, I want you, as you read chapters 15 and 16, first of all, I'm going to go ahead and tell you in advance, really, chapter 16, about one through eight, all the ancient manuscripts end there. I mean, they, they just end there. And there's, there's no resurrection appearance of Jesus. There's just people who are terrified and run away and they don't know what to do and they hide. The Gospel of the Lord. It's just, it's confusion, it's chaos. And it's, it's even textually clear, even by the shape of the letters in some later manuscripts and the grammar that is used in the second half of the chapter of Mark, that it was added substantially later that throw in some resurrection appearances. And just so you know where I'm coming from, I don't have a problem in Mark with that. I'm also glad we have John and Luke and Matthew, who, who share more. But in this most original Gospel, Jesus dies and he goes missing. Everybody's terrified. The end. Because I think it sort of keeps in line with the theme of the whole rest of the Gospel. Nobody knew what happened. Nobody understands. So next week, 15 and 16, and blessings on your week. Thank you for being here and with us again.